Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We'd like to call to order the meeting of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners. We're going to call on Commissioner Coggan for the prayer. And after Commissioner Coggan, we have two young men from PAC 123, the Scouts in Eagleville, Mr. Patrick Lynch, and Mr. Jake Bolden, the grandson of our own Mr. Jeff Jordan. So they'll be leading us in the pledge.
We vow. Our most gracious and heavenly Father, we are thankful for this day that you've given us, for its blessings, its opportunities, and its challenges. May we appreciate and use each day that you give us. We pray for strength and guidance for each day as it comes, for each day's duties, and for each day's problems. May we be challenged to give our best always, and may we be assured of your presence with us. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, men. Appreciate that. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Black.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Here.
Commissioner Farley.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Sandlin.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Sparks. Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Hall.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Coggan.
President.
Commissioner Bullen.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Ely.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch. Commissioner Daniel.
Here.
Twenty present.
Thank you. You have before you a copy of the minutes of the last meeting. Commissioner Farley?
Mr. Mayor, I make a most will approve the minutes as mailed.
All right. Do we have a second? Commissioner Jernigan, is there anyone have any corrections or additions?
Yes.
Commissioner Daniels?
I would like to point out that as of the last meeting, we voted on the legal services agreement, and it has some troublesome aspects to it that I think were not properly adjudicated. I believe that under the Roberts Rules of Order, Chapter 10, Section 38, since this conflicts with the statute, the private act, as to a two-year term, where do we get the right to go beyond that? That's fundamentally the question. Could you tell us who drafted that agreement?
Just a moment here, and let me reflect on what you've just told us here. Are you suggesting that the minutes do not correctly reflect the action taken by the commission?
I do not believe that if they just say we passed that, that the rest of it has been adequately dealt with. Now, I intend to bring this up later in the meeting, but I wanted to let everyone know this, right here on the front end.
Well, I think-
I withdraw my-
Yes, unless we can actually change the minutes or make additions or corrections, I think that would be better reflected at another point in the agenda. So you're withdrawing any-
Yes, I just observed that there is a defect-
Okay, that's-
Apparent on the face.
That could be a defect in any action we take from time to time, and that any defects, there would be an opportunity for change or correction.
All right.
All right. So is there anyone that has any corrections or additions they'd like to make to these minutes? We have a motion and a second. If there's no one else wishing to speak, all of you in favor of that motion, please say aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you very much. Okay, we have now a time for public comments, and we have five people that are wishing to speak. So I will remind those speakers that we have a time limit of three minutes, and we will honor that time limit. We ask you to come forward, give us your name and address, and make your comments to us, please. So the first person I have on the list is Mr. Jeremy Winrow. Come to the podium, please.
My problem in the county is that-
Well, I want you to give us your name and address first, Mr.-
I'm Jeremy Winrow. I live at 503 Coleman Hill Road, Rockville, Tennessee. All right. I have been to the Code's Department numerous times. I've been to Mr. Burgess' office on two occasions on these problems of people living in a house that is not suitable to live in. They've had a temporary service, and I finally had to go through the state in Nashville to get this done. They would not do nothing for me. So the building is not built by Code. It has a permit that's been pulled through the county, and they've done nothing to resolve this problem. It's still the same. They've not done any legal actions against it, and they pretty much tell me that since I do not live in a subdivision, that all these laws that y'all have set forth for me as a taxpayer in this county do not apply to me. And I'd just like to know what I can do in order to get these problems resolved. I'm a taxpayer just like a subdivision is. So I think the law should uphold me as far as pollution, noise control, trash, ordinance on houses, property, or whatever. So I just think some of that stuff needs to be addressed, and I can get Mr. Williams there and let him give my file on this and let y'all see what I'm going through and see what we can get resolved on this matter. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Winrow. The next person we have listed for public comment is Mike Linton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Mike Linton, and I live at 155 Spence Creek Lane here in Rutherford County. I'm a member of the Rutherford Neighborhood Alliance, a nonpartisan community organization committed to open and honest government. Thank you for giving me time to speak. A copy of my comments has been distributed to you. The September 17th County Commission meeting addressed the issue of legal services for the county. Part of the discussion regarded a private act. Below is a transcript of a bit of that discussion which took place during the second half of the meeting. During this meeting, Mr. Williams is referencing a private act. Here's the beginning of the transcript, and it's drawn from a tape of the meeting. Mr. Burgess, I don't know. Let me see that piece of paper. Mr. Williams hands a piece of paper to Mr. Farley, who hands it to Mr. Rogers, who hands it to Mr. Burgess. Mr. Burgess looks at the piece of paper. Mr. Burgess, yeah, it is a private act. There's something inaudible. Mr. Burgess hands the piece of paper to Mr. Kope. Mr. Kope, that's what it at present provides under Article 6a, reading now from the piece of paper, quote, "that it shall be employed by public revenues of the county without the approval of the quarterly county court in advance of such employment." Mr. Kope hands the piece of paper back to Mr. Burgess. That is the end of the transcript. Here is Article 6 of the Private Acts of 1957, Chapter 67, as amended by the Private Acts of 1965, Chapter 23, Section 6, "that no official, agent, department, or branch or board of said county shall employ other attorneys to be paid out of the public revenues of said county without the approval of the quarterly county court of said county in advance of such employment." Mr. Williams provided to the commission the private act as attested to by Mr. Burgess. This was the piece of paper that Mr. Burgess handed to Mr. Kope to read, but what Mr. Kope read does not seem to conform exactly to the wording of the actual private act he was handed to read. Here again are the two versions. The private act is written, "that no official, agent, department, branch, or board of said county shall employ other attorneys to be paid out of the public revenues of said county without the approval of the quarterly county court of said county in advance of such employment." This is the private act as read. "That it shall be employed by public revenues of the county without the approval of the quarterly county court in advance of such employment." I make no speculation as to why the full text of Section 6 was not read to the County Commission. I only point out to the commission the discrepancy between what is written in the private act and what was read to the County Commission, and note that it might be possible to come to two different conclusions about what the private act says based upon the two versions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Linton. Mr. Jared Barrett.
I live at 1620 Dodd Trail, Murfreesboro, here in Rutherford County. To continue the thought of Mr. Linton, the Rutherford County Employee Handbook, Page 12, Section 1008, Code of Ethics, states, "The maintenance of high standards of honesty, integrity, impartiality, and conduct by Rutherford County employees is essential to assure the proper performance of county business and the maintenance of confidence by the public and county government. Employees must avoid any action that might result in or create the appearance of using public position for private gain, giving preferential treatment to anyone, impeding county government efficiency or economy, or eroding the public's confidence in county integrity." Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Ms. Susan Allen.
My name is Susan Allen. I live on Nelson Lane in Murfreesboro. Two of the goals of the Rutherford Neighborhood Alliance are to seek accountability from and promote ethical behavior by our elected and appointed officials. Consequently, the questions surrounding your vote to approve the legal services agreement in September have demanded our attention. Our primary objective in this matter is for the County Commission to operate in accordance with state law. State law regarding the county attorney was established by the Rutherford County Private Acts of 1957, Chapter 67, and amended in 1965, Private Acts, Chapter 23. The RNA finds two sections of the legal services agreement to be problematic when comparing the wording to the private act. And I have given you all a copy of the private act. The first is the coupling of the initial term and the extended term agreements into one contract. We understand that the agreement for the first two years, the initial term, are for the services of a county attorney, and the extended term is only for litigation and extra services to be provided by Mr. Kope's law firm and not by Mr. Kope as county attorney. And we understand that this provides a method for transitioning all legal services into a county legal department. Since the private act provides for a term of only two years, we feel that each term should have a separate agreement. Also, in order not to give the appearance of preferential treatment, the contract for the extended term services should be open to bid for the wider legal community. The second is the discrepancy between the legal services agreement and the private act regarding who is authorized to approve the hiring of an outside attorney. The private act requires approval of the quarterly county court in advance of such employment. The legal services agreement calls for outside counsel to be, quote, "chosen by the county attorney in consultation with the county mayor," end quote. The concern seems to be that if a suit against the county were filed soon after a commission meeting, there would be no time to go through the commission approval process. Apparently, if a suit is not answered in court right away, it's forfeited. One solution may be to have a special called meeting of the commission to approve this outside counsel. The cost might be small price to avoid circumventing the law. Though we're not lawyers, we wondered if another solution would be for the commission to approve a contract with an outside firm on an as-needed basis, to perform the necessary legal services until your next regular meeting. At that meeting, the as-needed contract would end, and a formal contract with that or another firm could be approved to handle this specific litigation. This private act is the current law and is not irrelevant, neither because it refers to the quarterly county court, nor because it is several decades old, nor because it has slipped from use, for whatever reason. The County Commission must operate in accordance with Tennessee state law, and we do hold you accountable for your actions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Allen. Next would be Mrs. Lenora Diamond.
I live on Millisburg Road in Christiana, and I am an RNA member. To this point, you have heard the concerns of the Rutherford Neighborhood Alliance regarding the legal services agreement approved at your last meeting. The Rutherford County Board of Commissioners Handbook, Chapter 2, Rules and Regulations, provides that, "Roberts Rules of Order are to be followed in all matters not covered elsewhere in the handbook." Every edition we have checked, from the classic 1915 edition to the Roberts Rules of Order Simplified and Applied, says essentially the same thing regarding votes that are null and void even if unanimous. Here is what it says, "No motion is in order that conflicts with federal, state, or local law, with rules of a parent organization, or with the organization's constitution, or bylaws, or other rules of the organization. Even if a unanimous vote adopts the motion, it is null and void if it conflicts with the previously mentioned rules. Even though we believe the commission reached its decision in good faith, it appears that the legal services agreement conflicts with the state law, and your vote approving the contract is null and void. Hopefully, we have presented the evidence that justifies revisiting this contract, scouring it for any and all errors, and rewriting it so that it is not only legal in all respects, but also effectively serves Rutherford County and its citizens. Maintaining the public's confidence in county integrity is essential in establishing public trust." Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Diamond. Okay, we have a next agenda item is elections and confirmations. Mr. Coggan, are you going to take that agenda item?
First on elections confirmations is the election of notaries. Y'all received a list of applicants for that. Mr. Chairman, I move for their approval.
Motion. Have a second from Commissioner Sandlin. All right. All those in favor of approving these notaries, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, continue.
Secondly, is we need to fill a vacancy on the Board of Zoning Appeals. We had a couple applicants for that, and the steering committee would like to approve Mr. Keith Bratcher for that appointment. Mr. Chairman, I move for his approval.
I have a motion for Mr. Keith Bratcher. Commissioner Jordan, second. Any other discussion on this? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And thirdly, to fill two vacancies on the beer board. Several applications again for this board, and the steering committee would like to bring to you Keith Bratcher and William Murray for appointment to the beer board. Mr. Chairman, I move for both of their approvals.
And second, Commissioner McAdoo, is there any other discussion or question? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. That was unanimous. Thank you very much. There is no unfinished business. We do have just a few minutes before 6:30, but without objection, we're going to go ahead and have the public hearing, which would be at 6:30. And we will start with this public hearing. We have one rezoning request, 09-A014, on behalf of Patsy Cordell located at 768 Baker Road. The existing zoning is services, and the proposed zoning is R-15, on a site of approximately 2.67 acres. And Mr. Demosie will give us an introduction to that. Excuse me.
Mr. Mayor, forgive me.
Mr. Johnson?
I don't believe we can legally start before the time that's advertised, can we? In case someone shows up planning to speak.
Okay. Would you wish, I mean, I was-
I'm okay with it.
Said without objection, so you're objecting to that ruling?
Yeah, I would be fine with it, but somebody that's coming up to speak from the outside may not be.
Based on Mr. Johnson's observation, Mrs. Ely, will you please proceed with the business of the Budget and Finance Committee? There is no Purchasing Committee report, and I'll report that before she comes up. Well, I do, excuse me. There is a Purchasing Committee report. We must address that. So do we have a motion considering the approval of the Purchasing Committee report? Mrs. Cook, do we have a second?
Yeah.
Who was that? Mr. Black, I believe. All right. Are any discussion about the Purchasing Committee report? If there is none, all those in favor, please say aye. Are there any opposed? The motion is unanimous. Okay. Ms. Ely, you have approximately three minutes according to my clock.
We will begin with the general fund budget amendments, Item J2A. Commissioners, I would ask you please to consider Items 1, 3, and 4 in my first motion, and I would like to do the Health Department budget amendment and the amended contract with the Department of Health as a separate resolution. So included in the first motion will be Items 1, 3, and 4. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows. From the Sheriff's Department, increased revenue using American Recovery and Reinvestment Act dollars for the Sheriff's JAG burn grant in the amount of $538,165. Increased expenditures for the law enforcement equipment using those dollars, $538,165. Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant, again, using American Recovery and Reinvestment Act dollars. And that is increased revenue for the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant in the amount of $418,600. Increased expenditures going for maintenance and repair of buildings in the amount of $308,600. And solid waste equipment, $110,000. Payment in lieu of taxes from Nissan and also L&amp;W Engineering and Frank or Frankie USA Real Estate. Increased revenue for those payments in lieu of taxes, $485,000. Increased expenditures, contracts with government agencies, $19,662, for an increase to undesignated fund balance of $465,338. Resolved this 15th day of October 2009, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Schaefer. Is any discussion regarding any of this? Okay, so please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Nineteen of yes, one abstained. Motion passes.
Ms. Ely, I have just a matter of seconds, so if you would just please take your seat. We'll wait just a few moments, and we'll start the request on the rezoning. Wait just a minute. Okay, we have the rezoning request, 09-A014, from Patsy Cordell, 768 Baker Road. Existing zoning services, proposed zoning R-15, on a site of 2.67 acres. Mr. Demosie?
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you, and good evening, Mayor and members of the commission. This piece of property, as was stated, is located at 768 Baker Road. The entire size of the tract is a little over five acres, about five and a quarter acre, but the portion that's zoned for commercial is about just a little over two and a half acres, so that's the portion we'll be talking about tonight. In 1990, that portion of the property was rezoned to services to allow for the use of a daycare center. The daycare was never constructed. The business was never established, and the applicant's primary residence still remains on the property. Since the commercial zoning serves no purpose, the applicant would like to reestablish the residential zone on the portion that was zoned for commercial. This did pass the Planning Commission with unanimous vote. I would also say that the smarter comprehensive plan does show the future land use of this area as single-family residential with the potential for a future neighborhood commercial node. More for the board's information, it's not really relevant to tonight's decision, but there was a request for this same property before the Board of Zoning Appeals to allow a second dwelling unit on the property back in September. That was denied. The applicant is basically weighing her options at this point, but again, I say that just for your information, not that it really has any bearing on tonight's case, just for your information. There are no conditions, as this is not a conditional use permit, simply a rezoning from commercial to residential, R-15. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
While we have Mr. Demosie up, does anyone need any clarification or any questions to ask before we have the public hearing? Okay, then, thank you, Mr. Demosie. We will then declare the public hearing open with respect to this rezoning request, 09-A014. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak for or against this proposal? Please come forward and give us your name and address and make your statement. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak? Please come forward. I see one person coming forward, so please come on up.
My name is Patsy Cordell, and this is my residence and my request that we change this back to residential.
Okay. Is that all you want to tell us?
That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Cordell. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak? Seeing no one coming forward, then the public hearing is closed, and we recognize Commissioner Sandlin. Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we approve this request. Second. And Mr. Sandlin, are there any conditions that we should, no conditions? All right. So a motion by Mr. Sandlin, a second by Mr. Sparks, I believe. Now, does anyone else have any other comments or discussion? Seeing none, you're ready to vote? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Let the minutes reflect it. It was unanimous. Mr. Demosie, do you wish to say something else?
If I may.
Okay.
Just wanted to make a quick announcement regarding our comprehensive plan. We are having a community-wide meeting at Blackman High School next Thursday, which is the 22nd, at 6:00 PM. The meeting will be at the cafeteria at Blackman High School, so we just would encourage you all to attend, and anybody who out there who may be listening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, Mrs. Ely, you may return and continue your report.
The resolution for the Health Department and the related budget amendment, whereas at the regular meeting on August 13, 2009, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners adopted a resolution authorizing the county mayor to execute a grant contract with the Tennessee Department of Health in the amount of $1,629,700 for the provision of local health services for the period beginning July 1, 2009, and ending June 30, 2010. And whereas it is being proposed to amend said contract to agree with Rutherford County's 2009-2010 approved budget, and additionally, to approve an increase in the amount of $573,065 for the H1N1 vaccination, resulting in a total contract of $2275,800. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and other appropriate officials of Rutherford County be and are hereby authorized to execute Amendment 1 to Grant Contract Number Z10222129, with the State of Tennessee, Department of Health, a copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. And additionally, that the general fund be amended as follows, resulting in a total contract amount of $2275,800. Other local health services, increased revenue to the Health Department- Other local health services, increased revenue to the Health Department program, $573,065; increased expenditures, overtime pay, $228,500; Social Security, $14,170; State Retirement, $29,225; Employee Insurance, $8,855; Employer Medicare, $3,315; Printing, Stationery, and Forms, $300; Travel, $3,000; Other Contracted Services, $317,800; and increased expenditures for postal charges, $13,800; and decreased expenditures for other supplies and materials of $18,300. Resolved this fifteenth day of October 2009. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Jernigan. Does anyone have any questions or any discussion? All right, then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Item J-2B, Ambulance Service Budget Amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the ambulance service fund be amended as follows: Emergency Medical Services, we have increased revenue for other charges for services for $10,890. And this is for medical coverages and checks were get, were received from MTSU, Rutherford County Schools, and North Rutherford Soccer. Increased expenditures for overtime pay, $8,664; Social Security, $675; State Retirement, $1,393; Employer Medicare, $158. Resolved this fifteenth day of October 2009, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Sandlin. Does anyone have any discussion or questions on this? There being none, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Item J-2C, General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the General Purpose School Fund be amended as follows: Career Ladder Extended Contract. The State has reduced the funding for extended contracts, so you see a decreased revenue extended contract, and again, this is American Recovery and Reinvestment Act dollars, $12,092. Decreased expenditures for career ladder and extended contract and related benefits, $12,092. The Coordinated School Health Grant, again, American Recovery and Reinvestment dollars. We do have increased revenue, $180,000; increased expenditures for salaries, wages, and related benefits totaling $108,090; Travel, $3,200; Other Supplies and Materials, $50,710; In-service and Staff Development, $3,500; and Health Equipment, $14,500. State funding has moved this from federal projects to their GPS. E-rate funding, again, State is handling the E-rate differently. Decreased revenue, E-rate funding, $211,531; Decreased expenditures in communication, Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
We have a motion. Second, Commissioner Cook. Does anyone have any questions or any discussion? There being none, all those, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Item J-2D, A Resolution Authorizing a Transfer of Funds from the General Purpose School Fund to the School Federal Projects Contingent upon School Board Approval. Whereas federal projects grants operate on a reimbursement basis, and funds are requested from the State of Tennessee by Rutherford County Board of Education for expenditures on a monthly basis. And whereas the federal projects fund operates with a cash deficit at various times throughout the fiscal year to a slow turnaround time for reimbursement funds from the State of Tennessee. And whereas generally-accepted accounting principles consider a cash deficit in any fund to be a significant deficiency in internal control. And whereas Rutherford County Board of Education does not desire to operate any fund with a cash deficit. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of Rutherford County, a school district in Tennessee, meeting in a call session on this fifteenth day of October 2009, and by the County Commission of Rutherford County, a county in Tennessee, meeting in a call session on this fifteenth day of October 2009, that Section 1, the General Purpose School Fund shall transfer no more than $1 million to the School Federal Projects Fund during fiscal 2010. Section 2, the $1 million transfer shall remain in the Federal Projects Fund as a designated fund balance from the General Purpose School Fund, and may be repaid at any time, as noted in a resolution passed by the Board of Education and County Commission. Section 3, this resolution will take effect on October 15, 2009. The Secretary of the Board of Education shall include this resolution in the minutes of the Rutherford County Board of Education. The County Clerk shall include this resolution in the minutes of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, adopted this fifteenth day of October 2009. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
All right, you have a second, Commissioner Jordan. Now, questions, Commissioner Farley.
Can someone define for me what that fund, that line item is for, as far as the School Federal Projects Fund?
It's going to be cash flow. It's, it's, it's going to be just money transferred from the General Purpose School Fund into the federal capital, no, Federal Projects Fund.
So, what federal money is coming in here? What's it coming here for with the federal money?
Well, a lot of it's federal through the state, but also a lot of the IRA money is coming in. The stimulus money. And we have to expend money and then get reimbursed. So, we're expending the money before we get it.
So, it's basically for the stimulus money that's coming in?
It's strictly for cash flow. We're just moving the money in there so that we can pay payroll and any payables prior to the money coming back to us from the feds.
But basically, it's for the stimulus money that's coming in here from the federal government?
That, and occasionally, we have issues with other federal projects, too, just getting the money in on time to be able to pay the bills. So, we're concerned about with, you know, how fast we're going to get the IRA money in, so that's why we've asked for this, just so that we don't end up with a deficit. But at some point in time, it will go back.
Are there any other questions? Okay, then, we're ready to vote. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Item J-2E, A Resolution Authorizing Grant Application with the Tennessee State Library and Archives. Whereas Rutherford County has been notified of available grant funds from the Tennessee State Library and Archives for the fiscal year 2009-2010, direct grants to local government archives. And whereas Rutherford County desires to submit an application for the said grant in the amount of $5,000, which requires no local matching funds, for the purpose of acquiring archival supplies. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to submit an application to the Tennessee State Library and Archives, a copy of the same being attached heretofore as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by reference, as if set forth herein at length verbatim, for the fiscal year 2009-2010, direct grants to local government archives. And additionally, that the county mayor be authorized to execute a grant contract with the Tennessee State Library and Archives, subject to a grant being awarded. Resolved this fifteenth day of October 2009. I move for approval.
Have a motion, have a second? Commissioner Danglum, are there any questions? All right, then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Item J-2F, A Resolution Authorizing a Grant Application and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Grant Contract with the Tennessee Department of Transportation for a Highway Safety Grant for the DUI Court. Whereas Rutherford County has been notified of an available grant from the Tennessee Department of Transportation for the provision of implementing a Highway Safety Grant. And whereas Rutherford County desires to submit an application for the said grant in the amount of $60,003.99, which requires no local matching funds, for the purpose of providing funding for the DUI Court. And whereas the term of the grant shall be effective for the period commencing on October 1, 2009, ending on September 30, 2010, and requires no local matching funds. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to submit a grant application to the Tennessee Department of Transportation in the amount of $60,003.99 for a Highway Safety Grant. And additionally, that the county mayor be authorized to execute a grant contract with the Tennessee Department of Transportation, subject to a grant being awarded, a copy of the same being attached heretofore as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by reference, as if set forth herein at length verbatim. Resolved this fifteenth day of October 2009. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Have a motion, have a second from Commissioner Jernigan. Does anyone have any questions or discussion here? Okay, then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Okay, thank you. There is no report from the Health and Education Committee. The Property Management Committee has a resolution to accept the deed of gift from Shackletts Photography. Commissioner Johnson.
Tonight, we have a resolution for a deed of gift from Shackletts Photography to the Rutherford County Government. The Shackletts are a fine family. As long as I've known of them, now since I can remember any business, they've always been an outstanding business in this community, and always willing to go beyond just being a business, but always willing to help this community. This resolution is giving the county control of a very valuable asset, and that's years and years of photographs that just anyone would love to go through these photographs and just, to see what they entail. It's just unbelievable. So, I just want to thank the, the family for what they're doing. Whereas the attached deed of gift from Shackletts Photography to Rutherford County Government conveys a collection of Rutherford County photographs created and/or acquired by Richard Claude Shackletts during his lifetime, from 1929 to 1994, including original photographs, negatives, and copied negatives. A copy of said deed of gift being attached here, hereetofore as Exhibit 1, and incorporated hereby reference, as if set forth herein at length verbatim. And whereas, it is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County for the county to execute and accept said deed of gift with Shackletts Photography. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and other appropriate officials be in, be in they hereby are authorized to enter into and execute for on behalf, on behalf of the Rutherford County, Tennessee, the attached deed of gift with Shackletts Photography, resolved this fifteenth day of October 2009. I so move.
Second, was that Commissioner Black? Okay, does anyone have any questions? Okay, if we have no questions, then, all of you in favor of this motion, please say aye. Are there any opposed? Let the record reflect, it was unanimous. Thank you, sir. Okay, next, we have no report from our Public Safety Committee. Now, we'll call on the Public Works and Planning Committee, Commissioner Jernigan.
Public Works and Planning Committee has two resolutions tonight. The first will be a resolution to approve the naming of the bridge on Highway 96 East, the James C. McKnight Bridge. Whereas James McKnight was born, raised, and been a lifelong residence of Rutherford County. Whereas James C. McKnight was a longtime farmer owning 229 acres and last cassettes along both sides of Highway 96 East. Whereas James C. McKnight served his country in World War II in the 35th Infantry Division, 161st Field Artillery Battalion in the Normandy, North France, the Dines, Rhineland, and Central Europe Campaign, receiving a Good Conduct Medal in the European, African, Middle East Service Medal with five bronze stars. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners recommend the small concrete bridge on Highway 96 East between mile marker 22 and 23, be named the James C. McKnight Bridge, and this resolution be forwarded to the appropriate state agency for consideration and action. Be it further resolved upon approval by the State of Tennessee of said bridge being named the James C. McKnight Bridge, that the McKnight family shall be solely responsible for any and all costs assessed to Rutherford County for the same, including appropriate and approved signage, and that otherwise, the county shall not be responsible or obligated to post or pay for the signage. Resolved this fifteenth day of October 2009, I so move.
The second, Commissioner P. Commissioner Sparks.
Real quick, just want to thank Keith Bratcher and Commissioner Jack Black for recognizing this gentleman. By recognizing this gentleman, that this World War II veteran, we're losing about 1,000 to 1,500 of these gentlemen, and my father happened to be one of them. By recognizing while he's alive, I think it's, it's, it's more prudent on us as a, as a legislative body. What I've seen is irony with this, with government in general, is we recognize these people after they pass on, so just want to thank the Commissioner and Mr. Bratcher for recognizing this gentleman.
Does anyone else wish to speak? Okay, all in favor of this motion, then, please say aye. Are there any opposed? It's unanimous.
Next, resolution to approve the Drainage Easement Correction for Kia Estates. Whereas the Private Act authorizing the Rutherford County Highway Commission and Superintendent to work on public drainage easements and provide for the maintenance of public drainage easements requires the county legislative body establish an official list of recognized public drainage easement. And whereas the Road Board has approved the list of public drainage easements as submitted by the Planning Department. And whereas the Public Works and Planning Committee has approved the list of public drainage easements as submitted by the Planning Department. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the County Commission approves as an additional public drainage easement, the attached list, Exhibit 1, as submitted in accordance with Rutherford County Private Act and Tennessee Code Annotated 54-10-103 and 54-10-104. These public drainage easements shall be the only public drainage easements where... These public drainage easements shall be the only public drainage easements worked upon by the Rutherford County Highway Department. Resolve this 15th day of October, 2009. I so move.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Commissioner Williams. All right, is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Let it reflect, it's unanimous. We have no report from the Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee. Is there any other business to come before this body?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels, please rise.
Glad to, glad I can. My chiropractor's been working with me on that. Now, I want to come back to the Legal Services Agreement, because there's, I moved to reopen.
You moved to reopen?
I was one of the prevailing voters.
And your motion is to reopen the decision that was made on the last September meeting regarding the county attorney agreement? Is that what's your motion?
That's correct, for certain specific reasons that I'll set forth.
But that's your motion right now?
Yes.
Commissioner P. is second the motion.
All right, as I mentioned earlier in the meeting tonight, you know...
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, mister. No, we're not, we're having discussion now. We have a motion, a second, we're going to have a time for discussion.
As a proponent, I think I have a right to say what's behind the motion.
Yes, sir, go right ahead.
So, an approval of the Legal Services Agreement appears to possibly have been erroneous under the provisions of the Roberts Rules of Order that I cited earlier, Chapter 10, Section 38, and that was also brought up by the RNA. I didn't know they were going to bring it up, but I agree with the fact that it's there. Now, we need to resolve, by proper advice of counsel, whether that would be controlling. But before we come to that, I'd like to state the rest of my comments. The only part of the Legal Services Agreement that would be affected by the term limit is the extended term language. Now, courts sometimes, and Mr. Coe can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but the courts sometimes want to apply, and generally do apply, where something has an invalidity on its face as enacted, the question of whether other parts of it are still valid. So, the sections that don't extend it beyond the two-year term would appear to be okay. But the court could strike it all down. Now, we can't bind our successor as to what happens after any agreement that we enter into here, and I'd like to know whether we can bind all the way to the end of the extended period. Mr. Coe, do you have an opinion on that?
Now, are there other questions you're going to be asking?
Yes, I have a couple more.
Well, it'd be, well, I think if we could get all the questions on the table first.
Okay.
Your first question was, more precisely, would be what?
Whether, in this kind of a situation with the facial invalidity due to the Roberts Rules of Order violation, plus the fact that the local private act states, as adopted by the legislature, that the county attorney shall be appointed for two-year term, there is no exception stated therein. Now, the question is whether it is likely that if this act that we enacted is found to be invalid, on that basis, whether the court would leave in effect the two years, the basic agreement for the next two years, or whether it likely strike it down.
The first question centers on the two-year period past the county attorney initial two-year period, whether that's valid or not, and whether that would invalidate the whole agreement.
Yes.
That's your first question, is that more or less correct?
That is more or less correct.
All right, let's go to question number two.
Okay. The second question is, can this commission bind its successor by any act or contract that would, where there's a definite time limit or term limit stated, to go beyond that? In other words, can we amend the private act? I think the answer is clear, we can't, but I just want to make that point. Now, the other question is, where did the, you know, has Mr. Coe signed the contract?
Has Mr. Coe signed the contract? Is that the third question?
Yes.
All right, the answer to that is no, so what's next question?
Okay. I believe he indicated to me in a conversation centering on something else that that might be the case, and I wanted to be sure.
But we'll let him answer that question.
Okay. Then after that, I want to make a comment for the benefit of those who came up here tonight and raised many of these points. The adoption process had plenty of sunshine to go around. We did not violate our normal procedures in adopting this, and I just want people to understand this. I think there has been perhaps a misinterpretation of our ad hoc study committee, and that after we submitted the document, there was plenty of chance for anyone to raise anything they wanted to about it before the steering committee, and certainly at the public comment period before this body, as we had tonight. And I'd like to hear the answers to those other questions, but this was just a comment and an observation. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Daniel. Then we have basically four issues or questions that have sort of been presented to our county attorney for some answer. So, Mr. Coe, are you ready to respond to those questions?
I'll certainly try to. Mr. Chairman, first of all, as to the Roberts Rules of Order, the group tonight, this alliance group, has referred to the second edition, simplified and applied second edition of Roberts Rules of Order. And the current version is that I have, and it may not be the most current, is the 10th edition, so there've been eight additional editions, Commissioner Daniel. And you referred, I believe, to Chapter 10?
That's right, Chapter Roman 10.
Yeah, and Chapter Roman 10, Mr. Daniel, how is it styled in your second edition?
Mine is the second, it's the ninth.
All right, well, how is it styled in the ninth?
Improper, well, pilatory and improper motion.
Okay.
And it says improper motions.
Okay. All right. And with regard to that, then, you would certainly want to use the 10th edition and have that looked at.
Oh, I surely would.
Yes, sir.
And these people tonight who appeared before us said they looked at all the editions.
Okay, well, all I know is from the, from the public comment, it refers specifically to the statement to the second edition, so I don't know what additions they looked at. In any event, let's look at the extended term. You ask whether the extended term would be held as partly invalid, and the basic term could be held valid by the court?
Yes, sir.
And, Mr. Daniel, that would be something the judge and the court would have to decide. I can't tell you what a court would do with that. Now, I have to remind you, Commissioner, that you were on this committee that helped draft this contract, you had input on it. So, when this contract was presented to me after my input, I would have hoped that you would have addressed that in your duty as the commissioner, to decide whether that extended term was appropriate or not. I felt that it was appropriate. I felt that at no point has the county circumvented the law here, that we have complied with the law. But had you had that concern, I certainly would have hoped you would have addressed that before you voted on it last month.
Well, let me put it this way, as one of the other commissioners said to me tonight, we had a situation where we were relying in trust upon our advisors with regard to that. And I think we did, and nobody challenged our good faith in what we did. But it was just a matter, now that we've got to look at it again, what are we going to do about it? You know, if anything.
Right, well, I've answered your question that a court would have to determine. I think a court would find it valid. I do think we ought to go back, and it was my understanding, what your committee intended to do was that you were going to come forth with an amendment to the private act to clarify that the private act would be modified to come in conformance with the agreement that you adopted in September. My understanding was that your committee, and I never had the opportunity to meet with your committee, as you know, Mr. Daniel, in terms of, other than telling you what my position was, I was never asked for input. But it was my understanding, your committee was going to come back and present the private act as amended, once you decided whether the agreement was going to go through or not. So I understood that the private act amendment was still going to be forthcoming, and I still understand that to be the case, which would certainly make clear that everything you've done is appropriate and proper, and that the law has not been circumventing. But again, I can't speak to what your committee decided or thought about, because I wasn't there.
The mayor was, I wonder if he'd care to comment on that?
That was a study committee, we brought our findings to the steering committee for their consideration and deliberation, and that's exactly what occurred. I personally believe that the county attorney, under the terms of that agreement, is appointed for a two-year term. That extended term is not a part of the county attorney's general legal services, it just identifies how we will obtain and use legal services beyond the scope of what we defined as county attorney basic services.
So you take that much, I guess, as I did, as a statement of principle, to show the transition period?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Now, I don't believe we addressed the other two.
You had, I believe, two other...
We had a couple of other questions.
Couple of other, and your last one was on the sunshine law, Mr. Daniel, I think was your fourth one, and again, I don't know what all you did when you met, I really can't speak to your sunshine law question, perhaps you, better than others, would know about that, so I will leave that one alone for now. The next question, I think, is could the commission bind its successors to a term or a contract that would exceed its normal term? You frequently do contracts, commissioners, that run for more than your term of office, that is a four-year term or an eight-year term. You might sign a contract with waste management to manage your landfill for 10 years, you might sign a contract with an employee for an extended term. So there are frequent times in which you act and you bind your future predecessors to a contract term that is set out for a specific term, under the terms and conditions of that contract, with all the provisions that are set out. So you frequently do that. And you have the authority to do that, in general contracting terms. Now, your last question was, have I signed the contract? No, I have not signed the contract, and my intent was never to sign the contract until your committee brought forth the amended private act to clarify that all of this was in compliance. And once that's done, and when and if you all adopt an amendment to the private act that says you want to change the provisions, then at that point, if I'm presented with a contract, I'll certainly consider it. But as of now, I have not signed the contract.
Okay, and that cannot, reasonable contemplation be done until after the first of the year, right? Because the legislature's not in session.
That's correct, we understand.
You agree to that?
Sure.
Okay, so we're going to have a hold in the contract then, unless the first part of it is valid. But it's your opinion that the first part is valid.
Yeah, you've got a lot of provisions in there that in no way are questioned under your private act. The provisions on who you appoint as county attorneys indicated in there, you wanted me to serve another two-year term. You have lots of other provisions in your contract, that there's not an issue with respect to whether the private act conflicts or not. And while I'm at it, let me just address this issue, there's been these comments made that the county has, quote, "circumvented the law." I beg to differ on that. I beg to differ strenuously. I think this county's endeavored in every respect to comply with the law. Honest minds can differ in interpretation of statutes and laws and ordinances. And I've been heard tonight that these two sections were read, that as to the hiring of attorneys, and that must be done with approval of the county quarterly court in advance of such employment, et cetera. It would appear that throughout the years, since this was enacted in 1957, this commission has routinely entered into contracts of insurance with various insurance carriers, in which those contracts specifically say, and you vote on them as county commissioners, that the insurance companies have the right to designate the council of their choice to defend the county in matters of liability claims. And when you vote on those matters, Commissioner Daniel, you're approving those employment. You don't know who that attorney is, you don't know if it's Joe Smith, or Bob Jones, or Terry Wilson, but you've approved that employment of that attorney to do that work. Similarly, it would appear that complying with this statute, each year this commission votes on a budget. And in that budget has provisions for the payment of outside attorneys, for judgments against the county, for court costs against the county, et cetera. And you approve those budgets to employ those outside attorneys. Again, you don't have the name Terry Wilson, John Smith, or Jim Brown, but you've approved the employment of that outside attorney. And you've been doing that up here, and when I say you, I'm talking about this commission, since 1957. And when you do that, in my opinion, you're complying with this law by in advance approving the outside employment of council. And in my opinion, you don't have to thereafter come up here and say, "We select Terry Brown, or Bob Jones, or Bill Smith." And in addition to that, were there any doubt about that, the county finance office pays these outside attorneys. And you commissioners have the right to see what's paid these outside attorneys. In my 20-something years up here, I've never heard anybody question, "Well, why did we pay XYZ attorney?" You know, where were they employed, how were they employed, et cetera. It's always been the practice that you all knew who you were hiring, that you knew who your attorneys were. You frequently had attorneys come up here in executive sessions, other than myself, to do your work and advise you on these matters. So to sit here and suggest that the county has circumvented the law and is not complying the law, I suggest is unfair and inappropriate. And I respect the honest disagreement of opinions, and I respect those who have different opinions. And I'm not trying to say that they're wrong and I'm right, but I'm telling you that as far as I'm concerned, the county has endeavored to comply with the law and do what it should have done with respect to this. Could this be clearer? Would it be better if this private act were amended? Certainly, I think so. And I think that was the effort of the county mayor, and I think it was the effort of your committee, to try to get some additional clarification. And it's my understanding that you're going to come forth with this private act to amend, to say that this agreement that you adopted in September, that you're now going to have the private act come in conformance of that. At least that was my understanding, but again, you would have to speak for your committee.
All right, but now, assume that's so, we're going to go forward with an unsigned agreement just for the two years? Is that where we are?
Well, we're going to have to bring this back to the steering committee. We won't be able to amend the private act or change the private act until probably February or thereabouts, after the legislature comes back into session. So, between, the date of the agreement that we had is November the 1st, so that's been the date from which the county attorney has been appointed, year to fore. We can, without the agreement being signed, we will be executing under the same terms of this current private act until we get the new private act adopted by this commission. And I think it's a matter of us sort of working through a little bit of difficulty there, but we can handle that, we can continue just as we're going. We can execute officially when we get the private act actually approved and sent back to here for final adoption.
Let me say this, nothing that I have said tonight was intended to reflect upon any individual in this room. All I'm wanting to do is be sure if we've got problems, we fix them. And if we don't have them, that we tell people why we don't have them. And I think that has been done. There's one other thing. The question came up about hiring an outside attorney, if Mr. Coe were to decide that he did not want to do this anymore, without a signed agreement, that he could sign in good conscience. And... good conscience. Is it a non-delegable duty for us to allow the county mayor to hire an attorney just to file an answer saying, you know, "We need more time to answer this, you know, within the 30 days, or if it's a federal suit, 60 days," that sort of thing?
Mr. Daniels, in my opinion, if you'll read carefully the agreement that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners approved in September, on page three, under that section there, section two, I believe, it says that under unique circumstances, this is what you approved, the county attorney, with consultation with the county mayor, may hire an outside attorney. You have adopted that.
Yeah, and what could be fairer than that?
That puts us in clear compliance with even the current Private Act. The current Private Act would only be flawed to the extent it's got a fixed amount of compensation in there, and the compensation and the duties of the county attorney are more clearly identified and laid out in the new agreement, so we'll just sort of have to put that in compliance. That's really, it all has to be put in compliance.
Well, one final comment. Is it necessary, in paragraph H, to allow the sheriff to handle an attorney, hire an attorney, subject to the approval of the county attorney? That's--
We'll let Mr. Cope address that.
It's, Mr. Daniel, the practice has been that Sheriff Jones has a working relationship with insurance lawyers in Nashville, who he feels comfortable working with in his department. And as you were part of the drafting of this, the thought process, again, as I understood it and was told, that you preferred having the sheriff be able to continue that relationship in the future, if he wanted to, to use those attorneys in Nashville, on cases that he desired to have used in federal court in Nashville. And that's why that was included in there. And that was, again, to meet the needs of the sheriff's department.
Okay, but in other words, you're not wanting to veto his choice of an attorney who is a reliable and ethical attorney?
Well, Mr. Cope, if he thought, well, I shouldn't speak for him, I believe, at any point in time, any of us wanted to hire an attorney that he felt was incompetent and inappropriate, he would clearly bring that to our attention in a very forceful manner.
Right, that would be my expectation.
All of the appointment of these attorneys, these other attorneys, even though they were outside of Mr. Cope's firm, he was the person through which the decision came to allow the appointment of another attorney. It was not unilateral by the office holder or otherwise.
Okay. Now, I think I've used my time to clarify what I wanted clarified, and I'll withdraw my motion.
All right, we have a, you're withdrawing your motion. What, the maker of the second, what is your wishes?
I'll also withdraw, but I do want to make a comment. The reason I did second that is because we had the public comments. I was chairman of steering the year that we actually put that in place, and I remember Commissioner Bullen saying, "Well, I think it's a good idea, but when we have people come up here, usually, they're not going to be happy people, and they're going to bring things to us that sometime don't taste too well, and tell us things we may not like to hear." But I personally feel like our government, here in the United States, is based on that kind of democracy. We need to allow our people, when they see a problem, to be able to get up and state it. And they've got the right, they're taxpayers, and of course, they elect us into office. And I feel like anytime one of them's got a comment or a question, that they should be able to address it. And that's basically why I seconded this. But I want to go on and make one other statement, as I'm withdrawing that second, is I felt like, when I voted for this, and I didn't have a lot of hands-on with it, not being on steering this year, that, for one, I, along with the rest of us 21 commissioners, elected our attorney, which is in compliance to the law. We also voted on this act, which in fact would hire the secretary, secondary person or law firm. So we chose, in each case, who the attorney's going to be. So I don't see a violation of the law, or at least, that's the way I'm looking at there now. I don't agree with the quarterly court, or rather, the county commission now, giving up its right to choose attorneys. I think that's something we should need to retain. Now, if this Private Act stops that, that's something I would like to amend in the future. And I know that steering's going to revisit this. When they do, I'd like for them to keep that in mind, please. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sandlin?
Mr. Chairman, I apologize. Last month, I had to ease out about after seven or so. I had a meeting the next morning out of state, and so I needed to get there, and I had to drive, but, and I missed all this, I missed the vote. But I was looking back through the minutes of this thing, and I was just checking with the commissioner here. I said, you know, to me, we really didn't, and I thought the main event on this deal was to appoint, or for another two-year term, our county attorney. It seems like that, unless it was all-inclusive in that one motion, or whatever, with this big deal here, we really didn't do that, or the commission didn't do that. And if you hadn't signed that, and that's part of it, then, we're, I don't know exactly when your term is up, but I'm saying, do we have a county attorney, or do we not? Or was that in part of the motion, to affirm the county attorney, Jim Cope, for another two years? I don't, I didn't read it being that way. And like I said, I'd like a little clarification on that, because I wasn't here, and I apologize for that.
Well, the agreement that we, that the Board of Commissioners approved, clearly appoints Mr. Cope as the county attorney for two years, starting November the first.
Okay, so that was part of this whole change into all this. Well, by not signing that, though, is that putting us in some sort of jeopardy, or loophole, or something, that I'm not seeing, or I'm fussing about something that's really not there? Or asking a question, really not fussing, but I mean--
My understanding was, and it was my understanding, the committee had this, that at the time this agreement was done, that you would likewise consider amending the Private Act and bringing it forward to clarify this, so we wouldn't have these issues that we have before us. And I didn't feel comfortable signing the agreement until the Private Act had been amended. I'm serving at your pleasure now, as county attorney, I assume, for another two-year term. As to the other terms that are in this agreement, I did not think that I should sign an agreement putting those in effect, until the Private Act came back and was amended, clarifying that that was ratified. So I was going to hold up signing that, until you all acted on the Private Act. Now, if you don't elect to change the Private Act, if you just leave it as it is, and we don't implement this agreement, I presume then I'm serving as a two-year term, under the old arrangement.
See, that's my question. I don't, if it's all-inclusive, then, we don't have you as a county attorney.
Well--
Because you haven't signed it, and you can't pull out part of it, and not without the rest of it. See what I'm saying? If that was a different issue, as appointing you for two years again, then that was a separate issue, and then this other deal for the Private Act, on whenever it comes through, is two parts. But I, that's the way I read it, and it was one part. You see what I'm saying?
Well, my understanding is that, in consultation with the mayor, that I will serve this two-year term. I'm going to serve it in the manner and method it's been in the past, until this Private Act gets amended. When it gets amended, I will, I'm happy to sign the new contract. I don't want you to think I'm bailing out on you. If that, I'm not sure exactly what I have committed, that I will serve that two-year term, under the terms of that new contract that you all adopted in September. So, don't, if that's your question, don't have fear that I won't. I have committed to the mayor that I will certainly do that. And until then, though, I don't think the, that I feel comfortable, quote, going under the new terms, until we have this Private Act amended.
Well, I think, for the clarity of it, that we should redo, so to speak, and fully put you in as a two-year term, whether this is done or not. Because, to me, there's a timing issue here. It's going to be next February, or whatever. This is October, so you're talking about another four months of limbo, so to speak. And, you know, I'm really a little bit confused, anyway, about the cart before the horse here, or some of the other things that's been said tonight, and before, you know, the Private Act comes before we change it, we've changed it before the Private Act now. So I don't think that should have been done, in that, in that format, or that timeframe, my opinion.
One thing we could do, if, I mean, is we could, if you want to, you've already approved this agreement, but you could have another motion to appoint Mr. Cope, our county attorney, until such time as we finalize and approve the modification to the Private Act, and then this agreement would take effect at that point.
I definitely don't want to muddy the waters, but I think it, I would love to send this back to steering, in that form and fashion, unless there's, and I'll make that in form of a motion, that we send that back to steering.
Just a minute, I'm going to have to think a bit--
To separate those two.
On the appropriate rules, how we do that.
Well, to clear up something, I didn't vote on it, so I can, I can do it, as far as making the motion.
I believe, according to Roberts' Rules of Order, you had to be on the prevailing side to make the motion, and Commissioner Sandlin wasn't here, therefore, he couldn't make the motion. I was here, and I was on the prevailing side, and I'd be willing to make that motion. It's my understanding that he would be allowed to second that motion. You don't have to be on the prevailing side to second a motion.
Well, Mr. Johnson, the point we're discussing here, I believe, though, is, on November the first, without some action, we won't have a county attorney, officially. So if you want to make a motion that we appoint Mr. Cope as the county attorney, under the current conditions that he's been under for all these years heretofore, until such time as we take this back through steering and bring it back, or modify the Private Act, would be the appropriate thing to do. So now, do you have, do you wish to make any motion? I mean, or did I confuse you?
We won't have a commission meeting before we have a contract that's--
Well, we already have, the agreement's been approved, but it hasn't been executed. Now, we won't have a commission meeting until next November.
Well, if I understood Commissioner Sandlin right, which I was agreeing with what I was understanding, unless I misunderstood, I was in agreement with him, that we don't have anything binding right now, because nothing has been signed.
Correct.
So we can't go with the partial contract, because it hasn't been signed at all. Even the partial, I mean, you can't sign partially, and that's what I understood Commissioner Sandlin to say. So that's why he was trying to make the motion, to send it back and redo it in two parts. And that's what I'm saying tonight.
We can't do that prior to November the first. Now, you're going to be some period--
But we can make a motion--
--without a county attorney, under the legal terms of the current Private Act.
But we can extend, we can have a motion tonight, and I'd make that motion to extend Mr. Cope's contract, until this can be taken back through steering and divided. And then that, the divided contract come back to us.
Well, I don't think it would have to come back necessarily divided, but I mean--
Yes, sir, that's what we're asking for.
Well, I mean, you can certainly ask for it. So let's make it clear what your actual motion is, because, I mean, that's important. Let's see if Mr. Robertson has focused on it.
Move to extend Mr. Cope's contract--
And under the current terms?
Under the current terms.
Until the, until?
Until this is readdressed, the contract that we approved would be readdressed and brought back, divided into the two parts, by steering, presented back to us.
All right. I don't know, let me see if I can read this back. Until the current terms, Mr. Cope's contract as the county attorney would be extended under the current terms, the previous terms, and you know, the one he's operating on today, has nothing to do with the new agreement. Mr. Robertson's going to have to work on that some. We don't have this good and clear yet, and it must be very clear before we can do this.
Under the current or previous terms, until the contract that the commission has approved or approves?
Well, my advisors just informed me that we could drop everything after the previous terms.
Okay, just stop there. I mean, that's the most simple thing. Motion to extend Jim Cope's contract as the county attorney, under the current terms that are existing.
Previous.
Previous terms, previous terms. Well, it's still current, because this new thing, it's still current. We haven't, we haven't got to even November the first. All right, do we have a second to that motion?
Second, if I can.
Mr. Johnson said you could second it. All right, so I have a second now. Mr. Bullen, Mr. Schaefer had risen just a moment ago, he'll go first, and then you'll be next.
My question is just on the prevailing side. What was done at the last meeting, we did not continue that meeting, so right now, it doesn't matter whether you want a prevailing side or not. Anyone can make a motion concerning that.
Okay, so that being the case, the motion is in--
Mr. Sandlin could have made it, even if he wasn't here.
So anyway, in any event, we have a valid motion on the floor. Is that correct, Mr. Schaefer? Now, Commissioner Bullen?
I need a clarification on this. I thought that last time, the steering committee recommended Mr. Cope to be the county attorney, and then we voted here to make him the county attorney for another two-year term. I also think I'm correct, that for years, we've never had a written agreement. There's nothing to sign. We've been working for years on a vote up here, and when the vote was made, he was in for two years, and there was no written agreement. There was nothing to sign. So unless you can clear my fuzzy mind, Mr. Cope is the attorney for the next two years. We've already taken care of that. To me, what I'm listening is, you're trying to build Mount McKinley out of a little dish of mud.
Thank you, Commissioner Bullen. Commissioner Williams?
I just have a follow-up question, with regard to the, in Roberts' Rules of Order, this being null and void. I heard him say that the people that were speaking were using the second edition, and we were quoted the ninth edition. But if, in the current edition, it says the same thing, and if the current state law, or the Private Act, is that it as, I mean, regardless of fact, it's 5765, or whatever, it's what we have right today. Is that motion null and void through the 10th or 11th edition, if that's what it says? Because I've never gotten any really, I haven't understood the answer on that. We referred to, if the second edition was, it's null and void, but not if it, the current edition of Roberts' Rules of Order say, that a motion that was made, that was in violation of federal, state, or whatever, or local laws, is null and void, even if unanimous vote. Would that be null and void, if the current Roberts' Rules of Order says that is? And can we get an updated version and an answer on that? Maybe it's not appropriate here tonight.
May not be. What private, what law has been broken? I mean, I'd like clarification on that first.
What law has been broken?
Yes.
I didn't say that one has been broken.
Well, I mean, that's what we're saying, if we have broken--
I said, if, if, if the current law, or the state statute, is that only the county court, and only for a two-year approval, as the speakers up here were saying, if that is, in fact, the case, is it null and void, even if--
Well, first of all, number one, the county court, or the county commission, as it's now termed, they have approved the hiring for two years of a county attorney. That's not in violation of the Private Act. So what, what have we, what has reached a level of breaking a state law?
I didn't say that it was.
Oh, okay, so--
If, as they have stated that it is, Mr. Cope-- I said if, if, as they have stated that it is, Mr. Cope was saying that that was, they were quoting the second edition. My answer is, is, if that is the current law, and the way this contract is written, is it a two-year, a four-year contract?
It's, it's our opinion, it's a two-year contract for the county attorney.
Well, then the, him, the county attorney having the authority to hire the other attorney without the approval of the quarterly court or the county commission, I strongly disagree with that, as, as Mr. P. has said. I mean, I, I think that everything ought to be, come through this for the approval on that. Now, there may be some, something else that I'm not reading, but...
Let me tell you one, this is live, let me tell you one problem with that proposition about the commission, and this shows you how flawed this Private Act is, and why some of this confusion has arisen, Commissioner Williams. Right now, the way this 52-year-old law is written, it says that no other attorney can be hired by, for any board, official, department, branch, et cetera, except approved by the county commission. Well, Private Acts cannot violate state law. General law supersedes Private Act, and I think we all pretty well know that. I mean, you only are permitted to adopt a Private Act and deal with issues that are not otherwise addressed by the general law. And in this state, we've got general laws right now, that allow, that not only allow, but direct that the Board of Education shall hire its own attorney. That's a state general law. This county commission doesn't have the authority to employ the attorney for the Board of Education, in my opinion. You can't do that. Now, you can say, well, that 57 Act says that you can do that, but I argue with you, the 57 Act is subject to the general law of this state, that says that county Board of Education can employ its own counsel. And the same thing would apply to the Highway Commission by its very terms. It says the Highway Commission can employ its own attorney. Try to tell the Industrial Development Board that its statute doesn't say that it can hire its own attorney. It has hired its own attorney. So if you're talking about saying, well, we're in violation of this, yeah, you're, you're in violation of what's in your Private Act, but your Private Act didn't write. Your Private Act has been superseded by the general law that says these other bodies have the right to employ the attorney. You can't make them hire me as their attorney. If they want to hire me, they can, but they can't be made to do that. So I just want to try to clarify that that's why this Private Act needs to be amended, to clarify exactly the current state of the law. And I have to confess to you, I've been up here over 20 years, I tried previously, two other times, to come forward and amend this thing, and I was told by other people, not you all, don't go there. You don't need to do that. And I don't want to express to you all the reasons why, but I, I backed off from it. Mr. Daniels grinning, he probably knows why. But in any event, I was told not to do it. So now, here we are today, I offered myself as a two-year term, I'm delighted, and I appreciate the opportunity to, to serve you all, and I've enjoyed serving you all. I consider that when you've acted in September, you did, in fact, when you approved this, you appointed me for another two-year term. And I'm willing to serve in that capacity, a two-year term, just as it has been. And when this Private Act gets amended, if you all amend it and change it, so we can get this thing cleaned up, I'll sign the new agreement, just the way you all voted on it in September. I commit to you that I will do that, and, and serve out, as it, as it provides. Excuse me for rambling on, but I thought I'd try to clarify that, as to these issues in this Private Act. So you basically, if I heard correctly, then you think that the agreement that the Board of Commissioners approved last time, has appointed you already for another two-year term? That's, that is my understanding of the intent of the county commission and the action that was taken. That's what I understood occurred. Now, I guess reasonable minds can differ, and I hesitate to express an opinion here, I'm trying to give, you know, talk about something that impacts me, so I'm, I'm the last person to be telling you what you did. You know, I mean, I'm, I'm sitting up here trying to tell you all what you did. I, I know what I think you did, but, you know, that's, I hesitate to advise. I won't let Mr. Williams say one, whatever finishing remarks he wanted to say in response to this.
Well, my whole question is, could you check into that and give us back to what the current Roberts Rules of Order has regard to that? I understand that things need to be modified and cleared up, I'm just, what the current law is versus that, that's, that was my main hope.
On that particular Robert Rule of Order thing that that was mentioned?
Okay.
Yes, I'll, I'll get back to you. Commissioner P.
Well, to speak along with what our county attorney just stated, I'm of the opinion that we elected him as the county attorney for two years at our last meeting. That's my opinion of what happened. However, there is some question, because it was brought up in conjunction with that Private Act. Now, I know we have a motion on the floor, so I can't make a motion there, but if that gets withdrawn, I'd like, like, just clear this up, so there's no question in anybody's mind. You know, I plan to make, nominate, nominate Mr. Cope as our attorney, hopefully we vote that in, then we can send this back to Steering, and let them clarify all this other stuff.
We do, we do have a motion on the floor to basically continue with Mr. Cope as our county attorney. That's pretty much what the motion is now. Mr. Sandin, let me see if anybody else wishes to speak that hasn't spoken. If anybody else wishes to speak, we'll let Mr. Sandin speak otherwise. Mr. Sparks, do you want to speak first, or you want to let Mr. Sandin?
Well, I mean, on this adventure right here, I mean, I had the opportunity to look outside in, especially when I wasn't here, and didn't hear the intent, and didn't, you know, feel the motion, and all that sort of stuff that, that goes into a lot of these things. I was just looking at what is written, and so that's, that's why I asked this. It's not to stir the mud, or open anything back up, I'm just saying, from the way it's done, and the motion, it's all together. And so you can't take out a two-year contract, or commitment, or whatever, if it's all lumped into one motion, and there it is. And then especially if it's not signed, so that's, that's my thing about it, and, and heck, everybody's watching us, and they ought to be, because they're taxpayers, and we need to be doing, making sure we're dotting every i and crossing every t, so that's, that's great. We need to make sure of that. But I'm just saying, if, if we're gonna be without an attorney in November, we need to do this officially. Yes, he's still gonna be carrying on the duties, but we officially don't have him hired for another two-year term, is all I'm saying.
Commissioner Sparks?
My question is, how come we haven't had competitive bidding with other legal counsel here in Rutherford County, other, other law firms?
Well, Mr. Sparks, there are circumstances whereby you don't just take bids, you have to evaluate very, very carefully the experience, the qualification, the practice that a person has had, to determine if they're properly equipped to handle a particular case.
Well, is, is that reasoning fair to other attorneys?
It's very fair to other attorneys. Yeah, I don't think anyone would expect anybody just to, to shop this and take, put this in the purchase committee, because it would be inappropriate, you have to...
So that reasoning is, Mr. Cope will be our attorney for, his firm will be our attorney for the rest of his life then?
No, Mr. Cope...
I mean, we're never gonna open up competitive bidding.
Mr. Cope, if this works its process through, in about two years, Mr., we will have more than likely, an in-house county attorney.
Yeah. I, I just don't, I just don't think it's, it's fair, I've watched it for, for years, I don't think it's fair, and the problem I have with this, and rather than getting into all this Section 57, and all this other, other jargon here, is, what I don't, I don't think we have somebody looking out for our interests, and all due respect to you, Mr. Cope, you know, you represent several other entities, the City of Laverne, if I'm not mistaken, am I, am I correct?
I do not represent the City of Laverne.
Consolidated Water?
Do represent the utility.
Hilton County Electric?
Mr. Sparks, I, I have a duty of ethical considerations, I don't advise you who my clients are, as private attorney, and all I'm saying to you is, I do represent, Mr. Sparks, if you would allow me to finish, I do represent other entities, and, but I can assure you, I try to adhere to the highest standards of professionalism, and I do not, I do my best to make sure that I don't engage in anything that would conflict with any other's interest. I can't say that I've never made a mistake, I certainly have, I'm sure, but I do my best to comply with the ethical standards, and I don't allow any other interest to influence the representation and advice I give this county.
Well, and no one's accusing you of being unethical, but I just feel that, I just don't see how you can look out for our best interest, Rutherford County's taxpayers' best interest, and yet represent other municipalities, other entities out there. I just wish Steering would bring, would bring this up, and really look at this, and get the private sector on board. You know, Commissioner Rogers, I have a lot, a lot of respect for you, you know, look at this, I, I just, the way the system is going, this is a good, this is a big cost-savings approach right here. I think most would agree, and this time, right now, we should be looking at this, if, whether it's $50,000 savings, or a quarter million dollar savings in a year, we should be aggressive on this, and I, I want Steering to reevaluate it, with all due respect to Mr. Cope, you know, you, you do a good job up here, but I don't think it's fair to other law firms in, in Rutherford County. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Jordan.
I think we're all trying to get to the same place. I think whether we basically rescind our previous motion, and go with the continuation of our previous agreement, which doesn't exist, or Mr. Cope just, you know, agrees not to sign this, which I've got a little bit of a problem with, we've actually approved something, which I'm gonna agree with Commissioner Sandin, you know, it, it's not in effect until it's signed, and if it's not in effect, it's not in effect, so I, I would like to see, you know, Steering break this up, and we go ahead and get this signed, because, without the additional two years, and then when the Private Act is passed, but that, and at that point in time, because when this is signed, we're saving money, because we've, a, a, a better rate, and, and some other stuff in that contract, once it's going to effect until it actually is signed, so I would like to see it get signed as soon as possible, and, and start saving some money, and, and as far as, as rates and things like that. And then, and, and I don't see why, we could almost break it apart here tonight on the floor, and then take those two years out, but that would get messy in a hurry, so I think it could go back to Steering, we could, we could separate out the extended two years, because I believe we approved the hiring contract, the county commission voted on this, so that was approval of everything in this contract, so I don't think we actually broke any laws there. We, we might have on an additional two years, I think we can break that out, bring that back next month, and, and then get out, and get a contract signed, and, and move forward. I, I think we're all trying to get to the same place, with just some conflicts for how we get to that point.
Point of rebuttal there, Commissioner, just separating that into two pieces doesn't help us any, with respect to whether we're in compliance or out of compliance with the Private Act. We, I mean, that's, that's completely independent of that, we have to, we have to modify that Private Act for Piece One or Piece Two to be official.
Well, all I've seen that, that, to, to my opinion, is, is maybe out of the lawful part, is the additional two years. You know, if the county commission approves the contract, then it's approved, we have voted on it, we vote on who, whether we're hiring you and everything, but the additional two years, is that not the part, that, that's the gray area?
That's not the only part there, a number of things in here, I'd have to go back through it, there's five pages worth of stuff in here, many of which are different from what's your Private Act, and I've agreed to sign this new agreement, that your committee recommended, you all voted on, and I'll sign it as it's existed, once you get your Private Act amended. I'm, I'm, in all honesty and candor, I'm growing weary of talking about this, and I'm not sure I'm gonna sign anything else. You presented me one contract, you studied it for two years, you brought it forth, you voted on it in September, and in all due respect, I said I will sign that agreement once the Private Act's amended. And if it's done in February, I will agree to, for saving of the county's money, we will retroactively go back, if we've been overpaid any additional money in these three or four months, we will retrov, retroactively, I will commit to you, go back and repay to the county any excess funds, back to November one, once that Private Act is amended and the contract is signed, so it won't cost the county a dime. In fact, the money will come back to the county. But my preference would be to go ahead and put this to rest, and agree that, once that Private Act's amended, if you choose to do that, we'll sign the agreement. If you choose not to do it, I'm happy to serve under the way I've been serving the last 20-odd-plus years.
Are we not getting to the same place, whether we basically do nothing, or do approve Commissioner Johnson's motion? Are they all, are we not all going to the same place, in, in both ways? Whether, whether we pass this motion or not?
We have appointed Mr. Cope the county attorney, under the terms of the agreement. Now, the motion we have on the floor simply says that we will appoint Mr. Cope county attorney, and it will, he will continue to operate under the same terms and conditions, of which are not spelled out and identified, but we've been practicing now for 52 years, with no document. We must get a document that defines this, approved and put in place. This is going on far, far too long, and we have a motion and a second. We're gonna have to deal with that motion in a second, and it simply says, Mr. Cope will be affirmed as the county attorney for two years, under the current conditions, that he's been operating under for 26 years now. Now, Mr. Bullen has risen, he's next, and we're gonna go with Mr. McAdoo, and then Mr. Johnson.
Twice you've stated what the motion says, but somewhere over here, we picked up the idea that, that this is go back, is there anything in that motion that says it's to go back to Steering?
No, sir.
All right, so we're just basically...
Well, it's not in the motion, I read it repeatedly, and you said just stop there where it says current or previous. That's the motion. Now...
I think most of the commissioners in here think we have elected Mr. Cope for another two-year term. And I look around, I see some heads saying yes, so I, I don't know what's at the bottom of this, I have an idea what's at the bottom of it, but I'm not going to, to bring that out tonight. This motion, once again, for the third time, this motion basically states that we reaffirm Mr. Cope for a two-year term.
Yes, sir.
Now, who made the motion?
Mr. Johnson.
Is that what you mean, Commissioner Johnson? We're just asking for clarification over here.
Originally, I said to take it back to Steering, and for them to split this, and to, to make, to bring back the contract that just appoints Mr. Cope as our, our attorney as the previous conditions. Now, somehow that going back to Steering got left out, but I remember saying it. And then we, then we, everybody rehashed everything, and it kind of got changed, it's no one's fault, it's just, but my intention was for it to go back to Steering.
Well, that, that was, you, you and Mr. Sandin both there were saying, stop right there where it says current slash previous.
But I started out with it going back to Steering.
I'm, the chair's gonna rule, the motion is on the floor, that we just continue Mr. Cope's contract for a two-year period, under the current or previous terms. Now, y'all can vote that up or down, and then you can make another motion. We're gonna have to dispose of this, and we can come back.
I respectfully withdraw my motion.
All right, so we have a withdrawal of that motion. Second, now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call a, I'm gonna call a brief, 10-minute, just stop here, and whoever wants to make a motion, I'm gonna give them a few minutes to write this on a piece of paper.
Mr. Mayor, I was in the process of making another motion, and you interrupted me.
I understand, but I want it to be very, very clear, because this is very complex. Mr. Bullen was speaking, did you finish with your comments, Mr. Bullen? Before he...
He yielded to me.
We have no motion on the floor, Mr. Bullen now.
Commissioner, if you want to say something else, I just want to finish my comment. Whatever you do tonight, don't put us in a bind, and, and get us in a mess that, that's created by commissioners, we might as well not meet, if that's what we're going to do. I heard a few minutes ago, somebody said that, well, if this isn't clear, that we're in a period in November where we actually don't have a county attorney, they were sure that Mr. Cope would go right on doing his duties. Well, I would think, if I were in Mr. Cope's shoes, I wouldn't do anything for the county under that period of time. That would leave him totally vulnerable for anything that he did. Why would he operate as county attorney when you haven't approved him as county attorney? So use your heads up here tonight, and don't create a crisis when there is no need for a crisis. He is the county attorney, or he isn't the county attorney, and that's the way we ought to leave it here, we ought to leave with a county attorney tonight. Wake up and use some common sense on this. Thank you very much.
I don't, I think we did it last month, but I'll go ahead and make that motion for you, Mayor, it's just a motion to appoint Jim Cope and his firm to a two-year contract, beginning November first, 2009.
We have that motion, do we have a second? Is that, Commissioner Johnson? Any other discussion? I don't see any other, Mr. Sparks.
What, what is the problem with it going back to Steering?
I missed it, okay. We have a motion, address, address the motion.
What is the problem, though, with it going, going back to Steering for, for more discussion?
Well, I mean, that's up to you to determine what the problem is, I mean, this, that's, that's...
I mean, legally, how are we vulnerable, I mean, Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Cope, explain to me, what's the problem with more discussion at Steering? Commissioner Rogers, I'd, I'd like to get...
We can't, we can't ask for people to respond, this is not a responsive kind of discussion, you can make...
Well, what we've got here, and, and it's all due respect to Mr. Cope, we've got Mr. Cope giving us counsel, that's... giving us counsel. That's in his, in his best interest. I don't think it's, I just don't think it's fair. I, I think the way that the whole system is, it's flawed. I think if you really want to save money, put a competitive bid out there. Let other attorneys be involved. Let other attorneys bid. You're really serious about saving money, that's what we do. I don't think this, I don't think it's fair. I think we should study it more. If there's times now we should save money, it should be right now. But I, I would like to get Commissioner Rogers' opinion, because I, I have a lot of respect for your opinion on, on a matter like this, Commissioner.
Excuse me, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Rogers has not spoken to any of this, but, of course, it's this new motion. Let Mr. Johnson speak. New motion.
I'm, I'm in agreement with you, Dr. Bullen. That's what I was trying to accomplish is, when we walked in here tonight with an unsigned document that we approved last month, we had no contract, and Mr. Cope was representing us to the best of his ability, as he always has, and ethically, and, you know, all the other words you want to put with it. He's done well. No one has ever brought up another attorney or suggested another attorney to this, to this body. Every year, we do a contract, or, or when the contract's up, we redo the contract. But it's, we appoint our attorney. This body does. No one's ever brought up another attorney. That's why Mr. Cope has continued on from day one. But I was trying to establish a contract tonight that, because we had no contract. We would have had a contract if it was signed. It wasn't signed, so we didn't have it. And Mr. Cope explained why, and I understand and agree with him. But we needed something in writing, so that's why I was trying to get this sent back to Steering. I still need, think the original contract needs to go back to Steering and be rehashed and make sure everything in its right.
Okay, we have a motion to, to appoint Mr. Cope attorney beginning November 1. Now, I have to let Mr. Rogers speak, Mr. Farley.
I haven't signed yet.
Soon is Mr. Johnson finished. He's next.
I was just taking a breath.
Well...
It's, it's been said the last couple of days that Mr. Mayor you, and I think they alluded to, Mr. Cope too, was trying to circumvent our Private Act. Our Private Act that everyone's talking about is 50-plus years old. At the time this Private Act was enacted, it may have been legal, but as Mr. Cope explained to us earlier, the law now, the way it reads, the way our law is reading now, our Private Act is actually illegal. Well, it was either legal at the time it was passed, and the laws have changed over the years and made it wrong, or else it was, it was illegal in the beginning, and it never was right for us to go by it. So either way, we haven't done wrong, but it's, it is a big mess because the law is different than, evidently than the way it was 50-plus years ago. That's why I'm happy that this is being revised, that the Private Act is being revised. But no one, you haven't, Mr. Cope hasn't, and we haven't, nobody in this county government has circumvented the Private Act. Now, a lot of people like to point fingers, but, you know, you've got more pointing back at you than you're pointing forward. So, you know, and I got bashed before in a meeting saying that, you know, you need to come up with something constructive instead of just pointing fingers. Well, I'll get bashed again, but I'm still saying it. Don't just point fingers, you know. Do your homework, and even when you do your homework, you still may come out with a misunderstanding, but you've done your best.
Does anyone else wish to speak? Mr. Rogers, did you wish to speak?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. I want to address Commissioner Sparks' question first about coming back to Steering. I, I, I'll, I'll vote for this motion as it's phrased tonight. I don't, then the reason I think that there was an effort to get it passed tonight rather than go back through Steering was because come November 1, we won't have any actual county attorney in place. The, the agreement that was approved last month by the full commission hasn't been executed, so that kind of leaves us without a county attorney come November 1. Steering won't meet until November 2. And so I think that the thought was then that we want to go ahead and get a legislative action in place to go ahead and appoint the county attorney. The only thing we can do under the current Private Act is appoint, is appoint the county attorney for two years. I kind of see this as, as, as a good resolution to address some of the concerns that were made during the public comment period. It takes the Private Act issues and this agreement, the conflict, the, the possible conflicting provisions of the agreement out of play. All we're doing now is we're doing the same thing we've done for the past 52 years, and that is reappoint the county attorney under the Private Act. We then will, I don't think then we could be accused of putting the cart before the horse if we first, in February or March, obtain a new Private Act that then will allow us to go ahead and put in place this new agreement as, as Mr. Cope has, has agreed to, to execute. It sounds like a win-win. We, we can go back and, we're still saving the money that we would have realized had the agreement gone into effect November 1. So it, I think it's, it sounds like a good path to go on. I, I like it.
Does anyone else wish to speak before we vote on the motion to appoint Mr. Cope as a county attorney beginning November 1? That hasn't spoken. Have we back to Mr. Sandlin?
Mr. Chairman, and, and I think it was understood what I was asking, and there wasn't any underlying toe, Commissioner Bullen. So I want to clear that record right quick, but, as, like I said, as outside looking in and not being a part of that vote last month, you know, it looked like that this wasn't valid, and we want to make sure that, that we have a county attorney officially. So I think this does that, and I appreciate if you'd vote for it. So the only other thing I have to ask is the main intent of this right here. And Mr. Cope, I want to ask one question before I ask that. The, the Private Act, I guess you might say, the Private Act was in 57, 58? Is that what you're saying? This Doleen was?
It was 1957 was the original Private Act.
57. So the law that has made this out of date or illegal or whatever, what timeframe did that happen?
Commissioner, I can't answer that without researching when, when the changes were made that would have impacted the validity of this. I'd have to go back in the books and see when these other statutes were enacted or in place.
Okay.
In 1957, for example, I would suspect, and I'm just guessing, I suspect that the County Board of Education in 1957, and I could be wrong, I suspect they had the legal right even then to hire their own counsel. So it wouldn't shock me to find out that this act was probably on its face had some invalidity even at the point of adoption, but I'm not saying that. I'd have to go back and look when these other changes were made. I just don't know without researching.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, Mayor, the main intent, the main intent, besides putting our county attorney back in for two more years, is to get this all set up and squared away and a Private Act done and get actually as legal as we can current. But our process and our thought is that this Rutherford County Commission does want to hire a, our own attorney. And what I mean by that is have an in-house attorney, that they're not an outside, whatever separate type of attorney, that they would only be doing business for Rutherford County and our needs or whatever that may be.
This, this agreement puts the Board of Commissioners in the position of doing just that, because it outlines the process that it would take, and that was sort of the thought process that took place as we developed this whole thing, yes.
Okay. And our thought process on that openly and clearly, so the people out there know as well as all of us commissioners know, is we're gonna have, hopefully, or we're gonna have, I won't say hopefully, we're gonna have our own private hired in-house county attorney within that two-year period of time?
Well, at the end of the two-year period of time.
At the end of the two-year period.
Yeah, he, he would have an agreement for two years, and then at the end of that time, prior to the expiration of that, the County Commission would have to take the appropriate action based on whatever recommendation is brought forward to fund and provide the budget. If we determined to do it in-house, then we would have that place, take place concurrent with the exit of the agreement with Mr. Cope's firm. So that's not, that's, doesn't say...
But it really doesn't tie what, what the County Commission did last month. It doesn't tie the county attorney longer than the two-year period that we're wanting to do.
No, sir. No, sir.
Okay.
Absolutely not.
Because I think that's been misconstrued too.
Right, it does not.
Or misprinted or whatever. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll call for the question.
Call for a question.
This motion doesn't imply anything. It's very simple and very direct, and I'll call for the question.
All right, do we have a second on the question? All right, all those in favor of the question, please say aye. Are there any opposed? Let the record reflect. How many was that? A one person voted no on the question. The question has been approved. We're ready to vote on the motions to simply appoint Jim Cope as the county attorney beginning November 1, 2009. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, one abstained. Motion passes.
All right, Commissioner Johnson.
Mr. Mayor, I have one other thing. So I know the issue's not gonna die, so we, I think we needed to nip it in the bud, I guess is the way to put it. And I hesitate to bring this up, but it's been in the paper about the sunshine law being violated by our commissioners and you, Mr. Mayor. I feel that this needs to go, I don't know if it's Steering or Ethics, I think we have an Ethics Committee, but it needs to be before one of these committees or both of them and to decide. And, and I know that nothing was intentional if it was done. I mean, it was just people trying to do the right thing, and sometimes when you're doing the right thing, you get...
We would like to address that. We would like to address what you've just raised by quoting some chapter verses out of the Bible, the Tennessee Code annotated, if that would be appropriate to address your concern about that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. I'm reading out of TCA 8-44-102, and I'm just going to read a couple of things out of there. First, I want to make note that this committee that studied this issue about the county attorney, and I want to make it abundantly clear that we've been without any agreement, and we have operated in full good faith to try to put things in order that have been out of order for 26 years at least. And that's our only objective. And I think we've done a great job, and I think we accomplished that objective. Now, that was a study committee, simply a study committee. It had no ability to make a decision. All it could do is bring its findings to the Steering Committee. There is no violation of any sunshine law there. I'm going to read simply from the Code, 8-44-102, where it defines open meetings. Governing body is defined. All meetings of any governing body are declared to be public meetings to the public at all times. We all understand that. Governing body means the members of any public body which consists of two or more members with the authority to make decisions. This study committee had no authority to make decisions. It's not a governing body, period. If four or, or more members of the Steering Committee had been there, it would have had the authority to make a decision. It had no authority to make a decision. It was not a governing body, therefore it's not covered under the open meetings law. Second, meeting means the convening of a governing body of a public body for which a quorum is required in order to make a decision or to deliberate toward a decision. We had no quorum there, no authority to make, first of all, to make a decision, certainly no quorum there. And I think it's abundantly clear that no violation of the sunshine law or open meetings law took place. Now, Mr. Attorney can, county attorney can add anything he wants to, but that's my simple opinion on that. And I'm willing for anyone that chooses to file an Ethics complaint to the Ethics Committee to do that. But be prepared, whoever does that, I hope they'll pay the attorney's fee to defend it, because Mr. Cope will be conflicted and will have to hire some, an outside attorney. Now, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You said the way the law, the way I understood you to say it was, the law says when two or more meet to make decisions...
With the authority to make decisions.
With the authority, but...
That's what, that's what the Code says.
Does it not go on to say, because, I mean, it was in the paper today. I'm not saying this is the way it was, but that's what was in the paper today. It said, or to present to a governing body.
That, that language is not in here.
Okay, but it was in the paper, and I'm just trying to...
That's all right.
...squelch all that. That's, that's why I'm bringing it up. I'm hoping it dies tonight. That's the only reason I'm bringing it up.
We simply brought findings. We simply brought findings. We had no ability to make a decision. It was simply a study committee. All right, is there any other business to come before the group tonight? Commissioner Williams?
I just have a, a quick question, and I don't necessarily want an answer tonight, but I want to ask the question. I've gone back and looked through the Doleen case that we just settled, and noticed that we had an offer to settle months before we actually settled it. And my question is, if we get an offer from somebody that we're in litigation with to settle the case, does that offer supposed to come to this body, or can the county attorney, or can you or whomever make the decision not to accept that offer, and how would that transpire out? Because I, I'm kind of confused by looking through it over the months on that. But I don't need an answer tonight, but I'd just like to get that answer.
We'll, we'll make note of that, and we'll ask our county attorney to give us a, his research and findings on that, his advice. Any other business to come before this body tonight? Motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.